I call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the April 5th County Commission Meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he can help you with that. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
I'd make a motion to amend the agenda and approve it. I would like to move item 10 to after item 17 in order to have everyone responsible for item 10 to be here.
Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approval of the county commission meeting minutes from March 29, 2016.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $336,167.18. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, pay the bills, please.
I have a motion, a second. I have a motion, a second. Any comments?
Madam Chair, one interesting bill this week is $67,812.60 for Jeff Larson defending on a court-appointed basis here. And the outside attorneys get paid separately from our own and that's a significant bill for that type of thing.
For a court-appointed attorney. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is Minnehaha County Highway Department Report for April 2016 and that's on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
Second.
A motion, a second. Any questions for Carrie? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is recognition of significant employee anniversaries for April 2016.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. We have a handful of employees celebrating anniversaries in April. We have Aaron Serska with the Commission Office celebrating five years and we have the following people celebrating 15. Kimberly Caldwell in the State's Attorney's Office, Mason Braun in the Sheriff's Office, and Danny Casca in the Juvenile Detention Center. And our big winner for this month is Danny Berg in Facilities celebrating 20 years of service.
Okay. I'm not sure. I don't think we have anyone with us today, though. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Item C is recognition of significant volunteers in the county government for March 2016.
Watching those numbers every month and we're getting close to pushing 300. We're at 280 volunteers last month.
That's great. And that goes right in hand with item D, which is consider a motion to issue a proclamation recognizing April 10 through 16 as Volunteer Week in Minnehaha County. And we also have Susie Rikus here, I butchered your name, I apologize, with helpline. Carrie, do you want to speak to that? And Susie, if you have anything to say, that would be great. Do you want to come on up?
I just wanted to thank the county for appreciating volunteers in the community. It is National Volunteer Week next week and we just appreciate all that the volunteers do for us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Carrie, would you mind reading the proclamation for us?
Sure. Whereas National Volunteer Week is April 10 through 16, 2016, and whereas National Volunteer Week is about inspiring, recognizing, encouraging people to seek out imaginative ways to engage in their communities, and whereas volunteers make a significant contribution to Minnehaha County. In 2015, each month, an average of approximately 249 volunteers contributed to several areas throughout county, giving thousands of hours of service, enriching the lives of those they have helped, and saving the taxpayers of Minnehaha County tens of thousands of dollars. And whereas the Minnehaha County Commission wishes to thank all of the individuals who have given their time to support county government and make our community a better place to live. Now therefore, the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 10 through 16, 2016, as Minnehaha County Volunteer Week.
Thank you, Carrie. Any comments? Look for a motion from the Commission to approve the proclamation.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Item number six is applications for abatement. Kyle Helsaf. Item A is, well, actually, I'm going to let you go through those. We have a list of abatements today and property tax freezes, so, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Helsaf, Director of Equalization. I bring before you this morning two requests for abatements. The first one being from Messiah New Hope Lutheran Church, record ID 60968, for 2015 property taxes in the amount of $3,164.48. The second being from the Southeastern Development Foundation, record ID 42265, 2015 property tax abatement in the amount of $204.9. This was for a building that was razed.
Take a motion on item A and B.
Move for approval for item A and B.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any questions for these to Kyle? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And the next ones are Pam Nelson.
Good morning. Pam Nelson from the Treasurer's Office. And we have assessment freezes, C through K. Assessment freeze, record ID 56740 for 15 property tax abatement, 288.16. Record ID 46088 for property tax, 2015, 902.45. Assessment, record ID 33628 for the 2015 property tax abatement, $906. Assessment freeze, record ID 33063, 2015 property tax abatement, 476.59. Assessment freeze, record ID 32854 for $68.10. Assessment freeze, record ID 3834 for property taxes for 2015, $1,043.35. Assessment freeze for record ID 29222, 215 property taxes, 347.91. Assessment freeze for record ID 29395 for the 2015 property tax abatements, for the property taxes, 41.47. And for the assessment freeze for record ID 30249 for the 2015 property taxes, for $15.40.
Are there any questions for Pam on those? This would be a motion for item C through K.
Make a motion to approve items C through K.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. Item A is first reading and authorize the county auditor to publish notice of a hearing to consider rezoning number 16-03 to rezone from the A1 Agricultural District to the Cedar Ridge Plan Development District property legally described as tract 1, 2, and 3, Anson Edition, North One Half, Southwest One Quarter, Section 3, Township 102, North Range, 49 West of the 5th PM. Minnehaha County, South Dakota, located four miles north of Sioux Falls at 25670475th Avenue. This is just to authorize publication of notice for the first reading.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to authorize publishing that notice.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to authorize publishing. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. There are none. Next, we have opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak to anything that is not on our current agenda. Seeing none, we will move on. Next, we move into regular business. Item number 11 is consider resolution to establish a 45 mile per hour speed restriction zone on Highway 130 from 300 feet west of Dawson Avenue to 300 feet east of Trade Avenue, approximately 0.636 miles. DJ Boothby, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent. The Highway Department received, I think, three different calls about a month ago regarding some safety concerns on County Highway 130 near the renter interchange of I-29. And so we decided that it was appropriate to conduct a speed and safety study regarding the issues that were called in about. The issues that we received calls on were both speeding and also cars driving around school buses that were stopped to pick up children on the road. And so, we performed our study and determined that, number one, I guess, the people that are driving around the school buses, that is certainly illegal and that needs to be enforced through the Sheriff's Department. So we coordinated with the Sheriff's Office and let them be known of the issue and we hope that that is being enforced a little bit better. We contacted the school bus supervisor that is in charge of that route and let them know that there's protocol that they can follow in order to help out with the enforcement of that issue. And then also, we looked at the number of access points that are on County Highway 130 in that area and the speeds that people are driving on County Highway 130. And so, with the combination of the high speeds and the high number of access points, I think it says in here that there's somewhere around 15 access points within one mile and we typically try to limit that to about a third of that. With the combination of that, we decided that it would be in our best interest to reduce the speed limit going through the area of the interchange. And so, we've made this recommendation to change the speed limit from 55 miles per hour to 45 miles per hour for that section of roadway. And would welcome any kind of questions that you might have or concerns that we can discuss now.
Any questions for DJ on this? Commissioner Burr.
DJ, so you're not talking about the whole road back to the Crooks Corner there. You're just doing it at the interchange of 29.
That's correct. I think it's within 300 feet. Let me see if I can reference the exact number. 300 feet east of Trade Avenue on the east section and then 300 feet west of Dawson Avenue on the west section, which is that development area, the industrial park area.
I'll make a motion to approve that request. Second.
A motion, a second. Commissioner Bender.
I just have one other question for DJ. DJ, you talked that your staff had also evaluated the need for a school bus ahead sign and that according to the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, it wasn't warranted. Can you just explain a little bit about what that guidance is and what it does require?
Sure. We use the MUTCD for establishing warrants for traffic control signage and the MUTCD in this case states that the school bus stop sign ahead, or school bus stop ahead sign is used where a school bus, when stopped to pick up or discharge passengers, is not visible to road users for an adequate distance and where there is no opportunity to relocate the bus stop to provide adequate sight distance. And then we have a sight distance table that is given to us using a calculation. For a speed, I wrote it down, 55 miles per hour, that's 495 feet. And so, if we can see where that school bus has stopped, 495 feet away, then there's no need for a sign. Now, reducing the speed to 45 miles per hour, that distance would even be greater than that. So, we did look at that warrant and the warrant was not met. And so, unfortunately, in this case, there is no need or warrant to put up that sign that was requested.
Okay, because it's just a flat, straight road right there and you should be able to see the school bus. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to comment on that as well. You know, I was actually coming down to this office a month ago or so and a school bus stopped by the YMCA on Minnesota Avenue and with the flashers on and the sign out and certainly northbound traffic all stopped, but southbound traffic was whizzing by and I'm pretty sure that's against the rules unless it's a divided highway. And although I called it in, I've not seen any sign of any concern on the part of the traffic police. But hopefully, some enforcement can help and some consideration by the traveling public can help.
I just have one more question, DJ. And obviously, you've looked at this, but I live in that area and so I'm just wondering why we didn't go farther to the west. There's a lot of homes right past where your area is and obviously, you know better than I do about when to start a 45. I'm just wondering why the decision was made not to encompass some of those homes that, because they're kind of all stacked together.
Right.
Right at the end.
It was due to the concentration of access points in the industrial area. And access management is a huge issue in that industrial park area. Once you go west into where the homes are developed, the concentration isn't as concentrated.
Okay.
And so, that's the reason that we didn't extend that 45 miles per hour farther west.
Okay. And I did talk to DJ earlier this week and those signs will be up hopefully before Monday or by Monday at the latest. So, I don't know if the Argus Leader will have anything in there that tells people that we're going to be enforcing that, so, if this passes.
And typically, when we put up a new regulatory sign like that, if our message boards are available, we'll put them out there just to have a little bit more impact.
Right. That's great. Okay. I have a motion, a second.
One other question.
Commissioner Kelly.
Do you do the reduce speed ahead or anything like that signs in advance of the 45?
They're allowed. We, I don't know that we've discussed that at this point. When you reduce the speed in 10 mile per hour increments, you might start to look at those signs. And so, I'll have to follow up with you on that and see if it's been discussed, whether or not we'll install them in this case.
Good. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second on reducing the speed on Highway 130. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is consider a resolution to delete bridge structure 50-290-135, located two and a half miles north and one mile east of Corson from the National Bridge Inventory System. DJ Boothby.
Commissioners, last year, we completed a construction project where we removed an old tired bridge and rather than replacing it with a new bridge or box culvert, we decided to install a low water crossing on this township road. There are several drainage pipes underneath the road and then the road dips down and you can see in that after picture there that there's a piece of concrete pavement that was installed to prevent any scour or washout when the water over tops the roadway. And so, this results in removing a bridge from our NBIS system and in order to get the DOT to process that removal, we need to have a resolution stating that we did in fact remove the structure.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any additional questions?
Madam Chair, last night, at our township meeting, there was some discussion about using plastic culverts and being forbidden. And, you know, there were still some folks there that thought that they might work out, but they don't, right?
It's not necessarily considered a best practice on a paved road where if you do have problems, you have to remove pavement. And so, the County Highway Department has decided along with the majority of other highway departments in the state that we're not going to use plastic pipe. In some states, they do allow it, but it's not generally accepted in South Dakota. I know on township roads, it's sometimes a good alternative just because of cost. And if they do have issues, they're not tearing up pavement to fix the issues.
I have a motion, a second, to approve this deletion of the bridge structure. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is consider a resolution requesting replacement of the railroad crossing on Highway 143, .29 miles north of Lyons in the South Dakota DOT Statewide Transportation Improvement Program for the purpose of accessing railroad crossing improvement funds.
Commissioners, the Department of Transportation oversees or manages a federal-funded program called the Railroad Crossing Improvement Program. And we have, just around the corner to this, we have a crossing on Highway 118 that is currently in the program. It's been delayed because of some issues, but that one is in the program. And so, we are hoping to pass this resolution and forward that on to the state to get this crossing on 143 added to that same project. And the way that the program works is a 90-10 funding matching ratio where they pay for 90% of the project costs, we pay for 10% of the project costs. And then we also do some in-kind donations for some traffic control typically and maybe some asphalt patching if they request it. We're hoping that they're able to move forward with this officially next year. We're trying to encourage them to do that this year because they kind of dropped the ball on the 118 portion, but we'll have to wait to see what their schedule is looking like and what kind of funding they have available. But officially, we're expecting the project to be completed next year.
Okay. Any further questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
A second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 is consider a bid award for Project MC 149 Reconstruction, reconstruct reconstruction of 5.7 miles of Highway 149 from South Dakota Highway 38 to County Highway 120. Bids were opened March 30, 2016.
Commissioners, we were authorized on March 8 to advertise for the bid opening for this project. The project was let last week and we received excellent bids. I don't think there's any other way to say it. Our bid estimate was $3.39 million and that was based off of numbers that the State Department of Transportation had on their Highway 19 project, which was let two years ago and then it was a two-year reconstruction project. So, our numbers, we thought, were pretty darn good based off of a really comparable project that we had estimated. Oil prices are low right now and we're just getting good bids. Well, our bids ended up coming in about a million dollars less than what our estimate was. And our low bid was $2,416,127.38. So, just under a million dollars less than the engineer's estimate. Usually, engineer likes to be kind of in the middle of the pack and they were the high bidder at this bid opening. So, they weren't feeling all that great about it, but we were certainly happy to see that. Bowes Construction out of Brookings is a low bidder. The bids were all pretty tight and so, we're comfortable with their bids. We've spoken with Bowes Construction and they're very familiar with this kind of project. They've completed over 90 of them, real similar to this, and have a lot of good equipment to be able to complete the work. So, we are requesting your approval to move forward with executing this contract.
Questions? Is there a motion?
Move for approval. I do have a question.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, with a question. Commissioner Benega.
DJ, are you considering at all with the fact that that's such a significant difference of moving on to the projects, it's quote "at the end of the list" or "the beginning of next year's list" to this year?
We would sure like to. We're trying to move forward. The problem that we have right now, Commissioner Benega, is that everything that we design and bid, we're not able to, we're getting such good bid prices that we're not able to shelve anything. So, we don't have anything on the shelf ready to go bid. And so, we're definitely going to be moving forward with some designs upon your approval. And we're hoping to get some stuff designed and out for construction late fall if contractors are available and if we can get something out the door.
Okay.
We, I think, already got $2 million, close to $2 million worth of savings, if you want to call it that, from what we budgeted to what our bids are coming in. Haven't ever seen a year like this, so it's good.
Thank you.
I have a motion, a second, on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 15, thank you. Item number 15 is authorize the Chairman to sign a cost-sharing memorandum of understanding with the City of Sioux Falls for Public Safety Software Implement Services. Monte Wattenbach.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monte Wattenbach, Minnehaha County IT Department. So, this morning, I bring to you a memorandum of understanding with the city to share the expense of a consultant to work through the process of a request for a proposal for public safety software.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 16 is authorize the Sheriff Department to submit applications for the 2016 State Criminal Alien Assistance Program grant funds. Kristin, good morning.
Good morning, Kristin Tran. I'm with the Sheriff's Office. I come to you this morning requesting authorization to submit application for the SCAP grant. The SCAP grant is a program that provides funds to states and localities because of incurring costs for detaining individuals whom the Department of Justice believes could be criminal aliens. So, we look in our past and see who we determine may be a criminal alien and we submit that information. And at that point, they determine what dollar value they would be able to provide to us. The money can only be spent on correctional activities or equipment. It can't be used in even any other area of law enforcement, but it's money that is well appreciated and it allows us to do things that we can't otherwise afford.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any questions for Kristin? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 17 is a briefing by the Auditor's Office on recommendation to establish a fund, a capital accumulation fund in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law Number 17-21-51. Bob Litz, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And this is kind of a combination of things here. We'd like to give you just a little brief financial update since the budget seizing is coming up and then we also have an idea that we'd like to roll out to you here today. It will require no action. We're not asking for action today, only your consideration. The county budget for 2015, including cash applied, is $3,340,000 approximately. Our fiscal year '15 actual results do not require using any of this budgeted amount. Our general fund cash balances of January 1, 2016 is $12,169,861, representing an increase to cash reserves of $466,704 over January 1, 2015. Summaries of the general fund cash applied and the general fund cash balances are attached for your reference. Based on our fiscal year '15 financial results and additional revenue streams resulting from this year's legislative session, I would like to discuss the establishment of a capital accumulation fund to be designated for a new ERP system pursuant to 720-21-51. We've got a copy of that attached, too. State law allows you to accumulate funds for a period of longer than one year for capital outlay purposes. The funds would come from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, and be moved to an assigned fund balance for capital accumulations. We're recommending today that the Commission designate funds for the new ERP system in the amount of a million dollars. The county has already engaged a consultant to perform needs analysis and prepare RFP for an ERP. We are currently in the process of reviewing the RFP submissions. This new system will replace our current accounting tax system. It will provide enhanced integration between the Auditor, Treasurer, Register of Deeds, and Equalization. The projected cost of this new system is not quite yet known and will be determined as part of the RFP process. Because it is anticipated this cost will exceed the funding ability of a single budget year, establishing the capital accumulation fund would be a good step towards acquiring our new system. And we're just looking for some feedback on this here. You know, like I say, we do have considerable amount of staff time tied up in this. We're going forward this week with quite a few of these hearings and examining what's out there. And, you know, we don't know if this is what you guys want to do this year or not, but we're certainly asking.
Questions for Auditor Litz?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
Bob, is there a limit to how much we can put in this capital accumulation fund?
There would be. It'd be a limit of $5 million over a seven-year period, or a five-year period, excuse me.
So, we wouldn't be able to save up $45 million for a brick and mortar project?
Unfortunately, not. This law was brought in in 2012 and, you know, we became aware of it. I think I brought it to you, your attention at that time, of the possibilities that this new system holds and it's out there today. We've not funded it to this point. You know, the choice, of course, is yours. We understand that. But we think it'd be an effort of good faith, that money also. You could, we'd have to pass a resolution to take the money out of the general fund, put it into restricted fund. And anytime you wanted to, if there was funds left over to the end of the year on this million even, you could do a resolution to take it back out.
Commissioner Bender.
So, it's my understanding, we had a brief phone call yesterday, that really what this amounts to is kind of a moral obligation on our part. I mean, we could put the money aside with the intent that we want to use it for this particular purpose. But, you know, if in fact, we were able to get our bricks and mortar project off the ground and we go out to a bond and we decide to bond for this project as well as the jail, that we wouldn't in fact, we could bond for the cost of both projects and then this money would just go back to the general fund?
That's correct. You know, the timing on that would be my main concern because, you know, for an issue on a bond, the costs are about $70,000. So, on a million dollars, it wouldn't make much sense or even on a $5 million project unless you piggybacked it on another project. And that's called sizing the bond. And yes, we could do that depending on the timing. I just, you know, that $70,000... I just, you know, that seventy thousand dollar cost, you know, I, I'm very cognizant of that and I don't want that to be added on for a separate issue, but like I say, if the timing does work out, yes, Commissioner Bender, that's, that's a very good prospect.
Commissioner Kelly?
So my understanding that this is more or less a savings account for the new accounting system and we will be in a position to perhaps pay cash rather than opt out or do any bonding of any sort when we get, when we do finally adopt the system, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, and you know, we could, we could bring these bills to you one at a time and, and do it out of cash. But, you know, just because we got that million dollar sitting in there doesn't mean that we wouldn't bring these proposals forward and get your approval before spending the money, of course. But yes, you're absolutely right, Commissioner.
Yeah, it's just a source of, it's, it's where we pigeonhole the money.
It's, yes, it's a, a restricted fund for those purposes, yes.
Commissioner Benega?
Bob, in, my understanding is in most states, the package that we're talking about is administered by the state itself, where the systems are all integrated so that the, all the counties are using the same software, if you will. Is that, I know that's never going to happen in the state, in South Dakota, but is there other counties that may have an interest in joining the process of cooperative purchasing, if you will?
I'll, I'll speak on behalf of that. So, at this point, this Monte Wattenbach, Minnehaha County IT Department. At this point, we're still going through the RFP process and we have to go through and look at the various different products that are in the market, select the best one that fits Minnehaha County's needs. So we do not have a solution selected that is still in, in the works. So we'll, we'll let that, we'll let that play out. Typically, these systems though, would, would kind of be installed with a database for, for that county. I, I think that in the future, there's the possibility of, of having some conversations about, you know, what kind of cooperation we can have with, with other local governments. But at this point, I, I think we kind of need to, to take care of ourselves and get our, our own matters in order first, before we can jump to that next step. And I'd also add too, as far as the cost for a project like this, it's not necessarily going to be all upfront or all at the end. There's typically going to be milestone payments that, that would happen throughout the course of the project. So with that being said, it, it might be in the county's best interest to have this capital accumulation fund so we could start that project with some of those funds that we have. And then if we do need to bond, which is very likely, that bonding could happen at, at a later time when we see that some of those other milestone payments are, are going to be happening.
Commissioner Benega, did you have an additional question?
Do you have any idea when we purchased the software we're currently using and how long we've used it? And frankly, is there anybody else that's using it any longer?
So, the software that we're looking at replacing is a combination of purchased and in-house developed software. So our payroll application, which we're looking to replace during this process. Our payroll application, when did we purchase it? If I was to guess, I'd probably say fifteen, twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. And the accounting software was developed in-house, again, fifteen, twenty years ago. It's evolved a little bit, the platform that that sits on is an AS four hundred platform. For this particular application, we have evolved the, the front-end user experience with Windows applications, which has improved the user experience a little bit, but kind of some of the backend database platforms are still in those legacy, on those legacy systems. So with this project, we're looking at taking those purchased applications like our payroll, our homegrown applications, like our accounting and tax software, and, and purchasing a solution that would be more all-encompassing. So that's what we're intending to do.
Commissioner Bender?
Just to follow up on Commissioner Benega's question, so are there, are you aware of many other governmental entities still operating off of the AS four hundred?
Um, so if, if I can speak on behalf of South Dakota to minimize my scope here a little bit, you know, I think the general trend is to move towards more modern solutions, just because from a staffing perspective, long-term, that's going to be, it's a stale platform, stable, but stale platform. The end-user experience, I think we've done a really good job of making that end-user experience better by putting some of those Windows applications in front. But I'm not sure, I'm not convinced that's the long-term approach. I think the long-term approach is an all-encompassing solution. As far as other counties, I, I think the trend is in the direction that we're, that we're going. You know, and as a large county, we really got more entrenched into some of those legacy systems than some of the smaller companies that, or counties that went from very manual processes to purchased solutions.
Okay, thanks. Additional questions for either Monte or Bob from the Auditor's Office? Okay, this was just a presentation, I think we'll be looking at possibly bringing this back next week, is that correct?
Well, we, we were looking for a recommendation from you, if you wanted to hear from us again on this matter or discuss it, or I didn't know how you, you know, I'm leaving it up to the, the commission, of course, to go forward on this, whether we should bring the resolution forward, if you want more time to think about it, if you wanted more information, we're certainly open to anything.
Okay, well, I think at this point it was a briefing, Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I think, you know, if you're looking for support, you certainly got mine. I, I think, setting aside an account that we can then draw from to, to get this transition over to the new system without, without bonding, if it's possible. I have no idea what the ultimate cost on this thing is, but, but it makes sense to me and I, I think that we can keep it away from increased property taxes. The reason this money is accumulated is because we, our department heads have been very good about, in their budgets, budgeting carefully and, and revenues as the economy continues to expand, now we don't know how long that'll be, I think we're going to continue to see that. You can see it in the last four years after, after, you know, just by getting destroyed there in the nineteen, in the two oh nine, ten, eleven area. We built back a good cash reserve, the money's there and I think it, I think it's very prudent to put that into a restricted account.
Commissioner Bender?
Bob, could you just clarify that, you know, whether we put this in a separate acc, capital accumulation fund or not, the cash is there and we could use it at our discretion? So it's really, like I said earlier, kind of more of a moral obligation and telegraphing that that's what, that we intend to try to, you know, at least pay part of this in cash as the expenses come in.
Commissioner Bender, I think that's a good characterization, you know, we would just call it a, an act of good faith and of course if there's a, you know, things change, circumstances change down the road and we need to pull that cash back out of there, if we decide to change our minds, it's certainly possible to do that. It's a flexible idea, is what I'm saying, but what it would do is remove this money from the budget process that we're coming into. And the other case that I would make is our cash position right now is pretty good.
Additional comments? Okay, I, I think that we're ready to put this on the agenda for next week, unless there's any objections, so.
Very good, we've got a resolution, we'll bring that forward, thank you.
Work with the office to do that, okay. And we'll go on to item number ten, which was deferred to the end, a presentation by Minnehaha County Public Defender's Office of the two thousand fifteen annual report. Tracy Smith. Deputy Assistant Mike Miller.
Good morning. Tracy Smith and Mike Miller, here to present the two thousand and fifteen annual report. Mike Miller put the annual report together this year and he's also the statistician for our office, so I wanted to make sure that he was here in case there were further questions that needed to be answered, so I really appreciate you moving us to the end. Our office opened its doors in nineteen eighty-two, the first year. We handled five hundred and sixty-seven cases. In two thousand fifteen, we helped seven thousand four hundred and fifty-nine members of our community. Our goal is to provide zealous advocacy, advocacy to those that we are called to serve. Whether charged with a misdemeanor or a felony, our staff is ready to answer their call. We provide compassion, empathy and understanding in all the work that we provide and we strive to provide exceptional representation to all the people entrusted in our care. While the faces have changed over the years, our core mission has remained the same and it's a legacy that we are proud to carry on. In nineteen eighty-one, our average cost of case was two hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. In two thousand fifteen, our average cost of case was three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. So we are continuing to provide exceptional service while continuing to strive to stay within a reasonable, providing the most economical means to provide quality service to our clients. In two thousand fifteen, we had twenty-two attorneys, which included nineteen deputy public defenders, one senior trial attorney, and then one chief public, deputy public defender and then myself. We had five legal office assistants and five paralegals. By NLADA standards, based on need, in two thousand eleven, we should have had twenty-two point four seven attorneys to meet the needs of our office and in two thousand fifteen, we should have had, based on NLADA standards, thirty point, thirty attorneys, basically thirty and a half attorneys to meet, meet the needs of our office, which was a thirty-seven and a half increase over the last five years. This last year, we closed a total of seven thousand four hundred and fifty-nine criminal and non-criminal cases, which was a thirty-five percent increase over the last five years. We closed one thousand eight hundred and forty-one felony cases, which was a sixty-three percent increase over the last five years. Four thousand five hundred and eleven misdemeanor cases, which is a thirty percent increase over the last five years. And two hundred and fifty-eight juvenile cases, which was a thirty-four percent increase over the last five years. And sixty abuse and neglect, abuse and neglect cases, which was a thirty percent decrease over the last five years. And a fifty-six percent increase in major cases, which are those cases where clients are serving fifty years to life or death over the last five years. For the misdemeanor cases of note, which might be interesting, in marijuana cases over the last five years, we've had a sixty-nine percent increase. Petty theft cases, a seventy-seven percent increase. Unlawful occupancies, we noticed a hundred and fifty-eight percent increase. Violation of protection order cases, a seventy-four percent increase. For felony cases, we noticed a one hundred and thirty percent increase in major cases, a fifty-six percent increase. Aggravated assaults, a hundred and ninety percent increase. And failure to registers, a hundred and fifty-two percent increase. In two thousand fifteen, members of our office provided meaningful outreach through teaching and sharing near and far. Mike and I both participated in a Gideon's Promise Leadership Program. It was a training program out in Atlanta where we presented a training program to other leaders throughout the United States on things that we do in our office, to work with attorneys to improve their skills within the office. We also participated in other programs throughout the state. Every year I participate in Girls State. We also participated in the Criminal Justice Education Project. We participated with, through the State Bar and presented, presenting an evidence program for investigators and paralegals, which our attorney, our paralegals were able to participate at no cost to our office. We also have Katie Dunn in our office, who participated in a training for new lawyers throughout the state of South Dakota, which was sponsored by the State Bar. And several of our, members of our office mentor through the Sioux Falls School District. We've also taken an active approach through the last year. Betsy Doyle and Andrew Robertson are, have done some speaking at colleges and universities about what we do, why we're so passionate about what we do, in order to recruit more law students to try to get in this field of wanting to serve the public through indigent defense. Our office is also actively involved in all of the alternative courts that are here in Minnehaha County. Mike Miller is the Drug Court Representative. Sarah Pokala in our office is the DWI Court Representative. And Katie Dunn in our office is the Veterans Court Representative. It's been shown throughout the state that problem-solving courts provide a positive and successful alternative that helps keep people out of prison, lowers costs, reduces crime and recidivism. Drug courts are six times more likely to keep offenders in treatment long enough for them to get better. Nationwide, for every dollar invested in drug court, taxpayers save three times that much in criminal justice costs. And our attorneys work directly with the support of each of these courts. Drug court, in two thousand fifteen, we had thirty-six participants, thirty-seven graduates to date. DWI Court, twenty-five current participants and ten graduates to date. We also highlighted a couple of attorneys in our office. It was about five years ago that we incorporated several of the best practices recommended by the National Justice Defender Center after we started participating in the JDA, JDAI program here in Minnehaha County, including having an attorney at every TCH, or sorry, temporary custody hearing and making it so that we had one attorney who would specialize in juvenile law. Since that time, we've had Angel Reynolds, who has really taken on that role within our office and has really made that juvenile court position her own, so much so that she has been recognized as a leader throughout the state of South Dakota. As a juvenile defense attorney, she's done education and training programs throughout the state. She's participated nationwide, you know, as a representative and she's also been on the JDAI Task Force as well. And it's an honor that she works in our office and is a representative for Minnehaha County as well. We also are participating in the Gideon's Promise Training Program. We have four attorneys who are participating in that program where they started three, it's a three-year program. We have four attorneys in it where when they first started in our office, they attended for two weeks and then they, every six months, they go back for two days of additional training every six months. And you can see from their statements how much they receive through the program. It helps them to not only cultivate their advocacy skills, learn trial skills, but it also helps them, when they get to that point after six months or after a year, when they get to that point where it starts to feel overwhelming of how to overcome those feelings and to remember why it is that they became public defenders, which is to serve the underprivileged. Sky Friesen is our grant attorney, which you authorized as a position last year. Through this program, she, we received funding through the University of Oregon to cover a part of her position. Once that one-year position is up, she is able to apply for a permanent position through our office. We just recently had an opening in our office, which she has applied for. And then once her year is up, she did apply for that position, so she will eventually be. She was hired and then she will be moving into a salaried, salaried position. She has done a great job and it really does go to show how beneficial this program is. As part of the Gideon's Problem, Gideon's, Gideon's Promise Law School Partnership Program, the benefit to us for this program is we also don't have to pay for that three years of education and training that she receives. It doesn't come out of our education and training budget. It doesn't come out of our education and training budget. Any questions?
Thank you, Tracy. Are there any questions for Tracy on her presentation?
I have a couple. I mean, one, I thought this was a very, very personal report. I mean, it's very helpful to be able to, makes you feel like you get to know some of the people in your office, and I particularly appreciated that, so thank you. I'm a little curious, because you call it an annual report, and all the numbers you report out are over a five-year period, and so I just was, if you could just comment on why that's how you did it.
In speaking with other department heads, you know, what would be the best way to provide more information? It seemed like the one-year didn't give a full picture of what it was that we were seeing in national, you know, in a trend. It's hard to say from one year to the next year what the growth is, and it seems like it provides more of a picture of more information to say what it is over a five-year. Because, you know, we've, to tell you that the cases are going up or going down, that doesn't really present a good picture. We do have the stats from each year to year to year, but with legislative changes, it's really hard, when you have the state's attorney who counts cases one way, the Sioux Falls Police Department counts cases another way, and then we do it based on closings, I think it's more thorough to go based on a five-year.
And sometimes, can we sure they're kind of...
Mike, you want to just identify yourself and use the microphone, please? Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Mike Miller for the Public Defender's Office. Sometimes there are little flukes that happen, like in one particular year, the 90 days of heat, or things like that, that jump the numbers up above where they would be, so that five-year comparison is more of an even comparison to see where things are going and trending.
Additional questions, Jean?
Just a follow-up question in this. I mean, we've heard a lot about the increase in felonies, and I'm certainly not trying to minimize the increase in the case load that you guys are working with and that all of our justice system is working with. I was kind of surprised to see the decrease in the abuse and neglect cases, and I was curious if you had any comment on why you think that is.
I don't know why that is, frankly.
Okay. Wasn't a change in the law, there wasn't anything in particular that we would be aware, we should be aware of?
Nothing that we've been tracking.
Additional questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
Tracy, Mike, I know that when people are arrested within the city of Sioux Falls, there actually is a choice of charging them with a state offense or a municipal offense, and do you have to defend them on the municipal cases as well, if there are any? Because I think, you know, unlawful occupancy is the same as loitering, right? I mean, or something like that.
We only have to provide representation if they're facing actual or suspended jail. So if they are charged with a city municipal offense of loitering, we would not provide legal representation. If the officer charges them with unlawful occupancy, the class-two version, where they're facing 30 days in jail and a $500 fine, or they're charged with the class-one version because they've received notice before not to come back, the class-one, where they're facing a year, then we would be, they would be entitled to counsel.
So to a certain extent, the arresting officer gets to decide if the city pays for it or if the entire burden is placed on the county.
Officer discretion plays a big role in that, yes.
Commissioner Kelly.
There have been some changes in the unlawful occupancy deal, isn't there, on the city's part, as far as, that's part of the question, I don't know if it makes any sense, and then the other part would be, what typically would an unlawful occupancy defense end up costing the county?
Typically, because most of the clients are homeless, or don't have access to resources or an income, the judges will typically put the attorney fees to lien, so they're, most of the times, they're not ordered as part of the sentence. The cost of an hour in court for our office, I know what they're charged, what the hourly rate is set at, but based on my analysis of what it costs to the county for an hour in court is about $98 an hour.
And I think that you also have at least a day or two in jail cost for each one of those. Other charges, somebody who gets a DUI or something like that, they typically can bond out, but on those occupancy charges, the homeless individuals can't, and so we pay for them for a day or two each time they get arrested to stay in the jail, too.
So we're looking at probably, and you've got some office time, I would guess, you're probably looking at $400 or $500 perhaps cost to the county.
For the whole county, yep.
And then they go out and do it again.
Right. Because they're either mentally ill, or they were intoxicated and don't remember that they got notice not to come back, or they just simply have nowhere else to go.
Or that it's the middle of the winter and they're cold and they have nowhere to go, so if I get arrested, I've got two days of food and lodging.
We had one individual who came to our office numerous times, because several of the places wouldn't take him because he was incontinent, and so they wouldn't take him. And so he would come to our office, and we don't have the services to provide for his needs, but we didn't kick him out because it was too cold for him to be outside.
Have you noticed since the Dudley House opened that there's been any, that's reduced any, or, I mean, it is a facility they can go to, we've seen some pretty big reductions over in human services.
I think based on the numbers of arrests, which is what we go on, it hasn't gone down, but I think they provide great services.
Additional questions or comments?
If I could follow up on Commissioner Bender's question. With the abuse and neglect files, it looks like with our numbers from the past five years, 2011 and 2012 were very high, close to 100 files a year, those two years. The last three years have been closer to average with around 65 or 60, so there may have been something that happened those two years that...
Kind of a spike that, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
Commissioner Bender, you know, in regards to your comment there, remember, we had a spike in felony crime in those years as well, and I wonder if the economy might have made a difference for all of that. And if I might, Commissioner Kelly's comment, you know, that's just counting what the public defender is spending, not what we're spending to prosecute, not what we're spending on judges or courthouse security, et cetera. So a couple nights in jail, a judge for an hour, a couple lawyers for an hour, everything is rolled into there. I'm sure it's thousands of dollars on each one of these.
An issue that needs to be addressed.
One other...
Just a minute.
Just one other question on that.
Commissioner Bennega.
Okay. How much does mental health play into that? Big?
Quite a bit. Mental health and addiction are the two main reasons why I think people come into contact with law enforcement most of the time, so it plays a pretty big role.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bennega.
Actually, I was going to ask the same question, but I wanted to say, from a personal standpoint, Cindy and I have been on your advisory board for, seems like forever. I'm not sure why that is, maybe because I have to sit next to Bart, but anyway. The real issue is, I appreciate your administrative and strategic planning skills, and frankly, your training philosophies, and working with your newer attorneys and with your Gideon program. I think long-range planning has been a emphasis for both of you, and we've had people help in that process, which frankly, long-term, is going to solve some of our issues. One of the things that I always question in my own mind, because I don't understand the legal system, thankfully, is the fact that when we charge somebody, what percentage of those charges actually get reduced to, let's say, a reduction of a charge where we go through the process of charging somebody with a higher degree of an incident, and by the time they get through the system and they get to wherever they're going to be, they're down a step or two, and what that really cost us if we would just charge them, what they're going to end up with originally? I mean, I don't understand that, to be blunt, but is there a way to track that?
A loaded question.
Mike, can you get more into the microphone, just a little bit, please?
Yep. It's a loaded question, a little bit. There probably is some way that we could track that, and we could start looking at that. I don't know that we have an estimate or a percentage now for you, but I would say a lot.
It might be loaded, but it's also expensive.
Mm-hmm. It is.
And there's got to be a way for us to keep track of that from a, frankly, from a management standpoint, and what makes reasonable sense of site and release, or reduction of a cost, or whatever it happens to be, because I'll probably end up in jail and never get out by saying this, but there has to be some philosophical changes with the community to be able to deal with some of those issues. And they're either going to have to pay the piper, so to speak, or we're going to have to find an alternative that makes more sense.
I think there is...
Don't tell the judges I said that.
There is an interesting way to track it, but I, when I was doing some of the comparisons, you know, with the things that we did see the significant increases on, like, the aggravated assaults, or the possession of a controlled substance charges, when you compare that with the Sioux Falls Police Department to see if they saw the drastic increases in drugs and aggravated assaults, the two aren't the same. So I think you could look there and say, well, why aren't they the same? Why aren't the arrests the same as the charges? So...
I just think those things have to be analyzed, because there are alternatives nationally that are being reviewed. I mean, like, when we started this conversation, or when I started on your advisory board, there wasn't such a thing as veterans' court conversation, or mental health-related conversations, and those things are going to make a significant difference, we hope. But are there other opportunities for us to go and say, there's other things out there that we might want to consider? And I know we don't always have control of that, because the legislature has some, or a lot, of input, but the real issue is, is at some point, the community, again, has to decide what they're willing to risk, if you will.
Commissioner Bender, did you have a comment?
I was going to change the topic slightly, so I don't want to, I don't want to cut that topic off necessarily. I was going to piggyback on a comment you made earlier, that the compliments to how you handle training up young staff, and, you know, there's a lot that goes into that, I know. I was also pleased to hear that the Gideon's Promise intern, I can't remember the right word, that Skye has indicated that she's interested in staying here, you know, since she had relocated to this area, that's encouraging. I was curious whether you were exploring any other similar opportunities with Gideon's Promise at this time.
We are. In the next few weeks, we will be presenting you with a memo about seeing if we could continue that program. We were authorized funds for a new position in 2016, and we haven't hired anybody yet, because we do want to see if that's an option. We are working with Hofstra for a student there, and they've agreed to contribute $46,000 towards salary and benefits, but we'll provide you with more information once we have that finalized.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
I just, I appreciate Commissioner Bennega's comments, and you know, as we are faced with the idea of spending huge amounts of money on brick and mortar, it does seem to me that a lot of folks need not incarceration, but institutionalization, or at least assistance. And so, you know, nursing home care, for example, to help people take their pills correctly. We were just down in Vermillion, and one of the commissioners there took a fellow up to the VA hospital because the DAV wouldn't take him anymore because he spit on their driver, and they waited a couple hours to get this guy's prescription filled. They walked out of the building and he ate them all on the steps of the VA. He was pretty mellow after that, I guess, but the fact is, how do we, without, how do we help people without incarcerating people? People need care, but they don't necessarily need to be locked up. People need medications, but they don't need self-medications. We, you know, the future is a little unclear yet. We just, so far, we only know brick and mortar.
We, the Mental Illness Task Force met for the first time in Pierre and started having some of these discussions in a very early stage. There was a guest speaker there, and I'm sorry, I did not write down his name, but he is a neuropsychologist, and just talked about some of the brain function stuff of the psychology part, or the psychologist part of our alcoholics, our drug addicts, and some of our criminals. He talked about the primary, where you start treating people and knowing where they're at before they're born, and treating them as young children on the psychiatric side, and then the secondary, when they're starting to get into contact with law enforcement and stuff, and how do you deal with those people? And then the tertiary, the ones that are, like Jeff said, probably need institutionalization. But at what point do we want to start affecting that timeline, getting these people treatment early on? We don't want to reinvent the wheel. I think we need to look at national programs and see what else is working, because there are other states that are doing this very well, and we're not there yet, and that's what this task force, I hope, is going to be about, is we're going to figure out how to solve some of the issues. Like you talk about this revolving door of unlawful occupancy, and with high drug and alcohol, or high alcohol and mental illness of some of those people, how do we fix that so they don't continue to revolve through just to have a warm bed? We can do better in Minnehaha County, and I think we can do better across the state of South Dakota, so hopefully, good things to come. Additional comments? Thank you, Mike and Tracy, for your presentation. It sparked lots of good conversation, too, so...
Thank you.
With that, we will go on to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Bender.
I would just kind of piggyback on some of this conversation that we've had, that's been very helpful. I was at the Homeless Advisory Board yesterday, yesterday, right? It was Monday.
Yep.
And it was, you know, that's another group that are working on the homeless issues, and there's, actually, the highlight yesterday was two Augustana College students, basically for fun, did a documentary of homeless issues in Sioux Falls, called "Over the Bridge", extremely well-done, very impressive, and they do a really beautiful job in a very, you know, relatively short film, of capturing the complexity of the issues that face the homeless, that face people that live, in their metaphor, over the bridge, over on Eighth Street, and, you know, mental health issues and addiction issues, and, you know, some of them are issues related to poor choices, but they, I'll, I have a link to that, if anybody's interested, I'd be happy to share it, so...
Okay. Additional liaison reports? Jean, maybe you could run that through Carol and just have her send that link out to us? That would be great.
Sure.
We'd all be interested in seeing that, so... Is there any new business? Is there any old business? For a motion for personnel and contract for executive session?
Motion.
Second.
And a motion as second to adjourn with the personnel and executive contracts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side, motion passes. We are adjourned.